This work session of the Board of Education of the Cleveland Municipal School District will now come to order. Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Alakad?
Here.
Mrs. Hudnall?
Mr. Briggs?
Here.
Mr. Hurd?
Here.
Mrs. Link?
Here.
Dr. Sridhar? Mrs. Welchow?
Here.
There are five members present.
Thank you. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board Leadership Development Sessions of September 22nd and September 23rd, 2023, and the Board Business Meeting of September 26th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Excuse me, one moment. As we begin, I'd like to mention that recently our longtime Board colleague Lisa Thomas resigned from the Board of Education. I want to thank Dr. Thomas for her longtime commitment to our district and students over her 12 years of service on our board. In her long career as an educator and public administrator, she has been a strong advocate for Cleveland's children. The community-based nominating panel working with the Mayor's Office will soon be posting an application for persons interested in being appointed to this new vacancy on the Board of Education. After reviewing submitted applications, the nominating panel will then submit a slate of at least three nominees to Mayor Justin Bibb for his consideration in making the appointment to this unexpired term ending June 30th, 2025. The application is available on the City of Cleveland website. And now I'd like to ask everyone who desires to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, pleased to introduce our CEO, Dr. Morgan, to present this evening's report.
Thank you so much, Chair Alakad. So I'm so excited tonight to bring up our third school spotlight that we'll do in a moment. This is a new practice we're doing this year to make sure that we can get a glimpse into some of our schools, meet our school leaders, but then also hear some of the things that are going well in their building, but also some of the things that they're working on. So in a moment, we're going to bring up our phenomenal leaders from Riverside to share the school spotlight. But a few things, I just want to share some announcements. Of course, I've been on the Listen and Learn Tour this week. Yesterday, I did the second of the major town halls on the West Side, and it was a great showing. We had several people out and sharing really specific strategies, so I was really fortunate to have that. We also had several smaller group sessions today where there were people we were able to communicate with, smaller groups such as business leaders within the community, our leaders in the health space, as well as people in the community development space. Last week, there were almost about 500 students I met with, and that was the toughest group of them all because our students did not hold back. They gave really strong feedback. But as one of the young ladies on the Student Advisory Council mentioned, student voice should be the first voice that we prioritize. And the student feedback should outweigh any other feedback, 99.999% above everyone else. And so that young lady who shared that, it definitely resonates with me, and it's a reminder of why we do this work. Speaking of students, in my many years of urban education, there's always, it's unfortunate when you have to lose students, particularly when you lose students to gun violence or to any act. And so this has been a tough week or a few weeks. We've had one staff member that has passed away, and then also four students. I'm going to name them and then also ask for a moment of silence. At the end of September, we lost Rhonda Stefoco, who was a teacher at Clare Westrop. We also unfortunately lost one of our pre-K scholars, Luis Diaz at Waverly. At the end of last week, we lost Tre'Shan Troutman, who's a junior at School of One Magnet, Marcel Martin, who is a senior at Glenville. And then just yesterday, we unfortunately lost a student, Annalise Perez, who is a student at Rhodes Environmental. As I mentioned, these are never easy when we do this, but it's about how we come together as a community to provide support and also how we support the family through these trying times. Let's offer a moment of silence for our colleagues and students that have gone. Thank you. Shifting gears and on a lighter note, October is National Principal Appreciation Month. And so throughout this month, we are showing our principals just how much we celebrate them. The work is tireless and often thankless, but we thank you. We thank you, whether you are a school leader, a principal, assistant principal, instructional coach at the building. We cannot do this work without you, so we thank you, and we hope that all month long you feel celebrated, in all ways that you feel celebrated, but thank you for the work that you do. Without further ado, I'm pleased to bring up two of our phenomenal school leaders from Riverside, led by Ms. Jessica Gamble, who is the head principal at Riverside Pre-K.
Sophie, thank you so much for having me. The other young lady that was sitting with me, she's my secretary, but I would say that they're just as much of a school leader as myself and my assistant principal are, so I brought Katie Davis with me today. Very lucky to work with such an amazing secretary. My assistant principal cannot be here this evening. So before I get started, I just want to say thank you for inviting me this evening. I'm very excited to share a glimpse inside of Riverside and answer any questions you might have about our amazing school building, so I'll get started. I will say it is very different for me to have people standing behind me when I present because normally I'm at the front of the room, and so I apologize for those behind me. I hope my hair looks wonderful from the behind view tonight. So we are going to talk a little bit about who Riverside is, our AAP focus areas, some of our school data, our partners in education, some bright spots to kind of give you a glimpse inside of what our everyday life looks like inside of our building, and then some focuses and celebrations. So this is the most current recent photo of our entire school staff actually wearing the shirt I'm wearing today. This is our school shirt of the year that we give at the start of every school year. Who we are at Riverside really kind of came together during the year we were closed for the pandemic. We spent a lot of time talking about who we are and what did we want for our scholars and what we wanted for our community, and we worked as a collective group through Zoom, actually, because we couldn't see each other in person that year, to come up with this mission and vision. So I'll give you the highlights. Our goals really are to develop really responsible and critically thinking scholars who think creatively and are wanting to be lifelong learners and contribute to our diverse community. It is very important that we use student-centered practices that include the arts, technology, health, and fitness. And so we've been very, excuse me, very lucky. Period Zero has been a wonderful alignment to our mission and vision. We have a very large group of students who show up every day for Period Zero, anywhere between 45 to 50 scholars in grades four to eight that participate in band, art, and PE. And this year, we are expanding our Period Zero art class. They will be doing some art installations inside of our building. And so this vision really speaks to more than just the actual academics of, you know, reading and writing and science and math, but valuing all of the educators in our building and how those make an impact of the type of scholars that we're growing every single day. Our AAP focus areas for this school year, and actually have been focus areas for quite some time, are to incorporate reading and writing practices across all of our disciplines, focusing on complex texts that are at grade level across all content areas. We are an Into School, so we use Into Literature and Into Reading. This is our third year with both of those programs, and we supplement our ELA instruction using Lexia Core 5 and Lexia PowerUp. For our students, it's the blended learning portion where they are on their devices during their ELA blocks every single day. For math, we are focused on promoting tasks that involve problem solving and reasoning. This is actually one of my scholars from this school year in this picture. He is a first grader, and this was their math, I just completely lost the name, Math Mania Day where they were focused on addition. The entire classroom was turned into a bakery, a donut bakery, and every single station was themed, and the kids had chef's hats, and they had aprons, and they got to participate and show what they knew about addition and addition and subtraction strategies on this particular morning with parent volunteers, and actually some middle school students came down. In math, we're an Into School as well, so we use Into Math across all of our grades, and we supplement in the blended learning with iExcel and extra math. So PBIS in our engagement-focused strategies. Here, I'm just going to kind of highlight some of our goals for the year in both. We have been engaged with the state and the county at the ESC with PBIS for quite some time. We have a completed matrix that's been updated last year post-COVID. Our goal this year is to have our matrix kind of posted in the school in a meaningful way so the students can see the posters across the building. We are going to finalize our check-in and checkout process to support our Tier Two students, and we would like to choose an SEL curriculum is kind of the goal of the group as well as our entire staff this school year. In terms of engaging our families, we try to do a lot. Last year, we started Family First Nights, which were one night per quarter where everybody in our entire building didn't have homework, and that included the teachers too, and that included me not having homework. Both of my children go to Riverside, so Family First Night is a big deal because everybody wants me to leave my work bag and my computer at school so that we can engage in family, just in family togetherness and connection and communication. This year, we decided we were going to expand that and do that once per month instead of just once per marking period. So we're continuing that. We also partner with local restaurants, and we fundraise. So then nobody has to cook. You can grab canes or pizza, and the money proceeds kind of go to our parent association. We host a huge winter literacy night every single school year, and we'll be hosting our third STEAM night this school year. We used to have this very large parent-teacher council at Riverside pre-COVID, and we've kind of, it's just kind of fizzled the last couple of years. And our goal this year was to revitalize that parent group, and I'm happy to say we had 10 parents show up and some new members run for office last week at our meeting. And so just getting that feeling of having an active parent-teacher organization has been very important to us. We are a class dojo school, school-wide, so we post weekly messages to our families so they always know what's going on inside of all the classrooms, and that includes art, music, physical education, yoga, and STEM, and then continuing our parent-teacher conferences, which are actually coming up really shortly. In terms of equity and focus, we've had these two portrait of graduate goals for quite some time. If you've ever been to Riverside, it's very difficult to deny the diverse population that we serve. It is something that we're very proud of. It is something that we talk about all the time, and so both of our equity goals focus on global citizenship and social and cross-cultural empathy. We really want our scholars to be asking questions about the world around them and engaging in conversations on how they can make that better, but also understanding that everybody has different experiences through their own lens and actively learning about what those cultures mean. And I think this picture is like a beautiful example of that. One of our students, too, they're now in second grade, but dancing at a school dance, and one is wearing a hijab, and we're listening to music from all over at this event that our scholars would love to have every day, right? Like a school dance would be on their top priorities of things they would be okay having every Friday. So let's kind of dig a little deeper into who Riverside, who we are. And I really want to highlight our scholar attributes on the left-hand side because this is like a demographic broken down by race. So it says our population is 52% Caucasian, but the reality is we have a large number of scholars who race does not appear here on this choice for them. And so many of our Arabic students, our Middle Eastern students, and other students that have come from diverse cultures, their families choose Caucasian or white when they are filling out their demographic form. So it's a little skewed in terms of our data, but I can tell you that of the students, of the students in our building, which is 479 as of today, and in two days, 481. We have two more kiddos coming tomorrow. We have 74 scholars who speak Arabic, 17 scholars who speak Spanish, two Swahili speakers, which are our first two Swahili speakers in my tenure at Riverside, two Farsi speakers, seven Nepali speakers, one Pashto speaker, and one Cambodian speaker. So we have an extremely diverse school population, and when people come to take a tour in our building, I always tell them Riverside is diverse in the terms of the colors of our children's skin, but you are also going to find that in the languages that we speak and the religions that we practice, as well as some of our students with disabilities. We have a student who's visually impaired. We have quite a few students who are in wheelchairs, students who are non-verbal. We are the full definition, in my opinion, on what it looks like to be a very diverse and inclusive school building. The bar on the, the graph on the right, I realized today when I was reviewing, somehow that is not accurate, so I do want to just update this. 18.4% of our students are limited English proficient, and 26% of our scholars at Riverside are students with disabilities. In terms of our staff, we have 71 total educators in our building. 58 are female and 13 are male, so we are a very female-dominated building. And these are just some pictures of our Riverside staff here. That's my assistant principal on the left in the picture with the gentleman, just so you guys can see her. All right, so let's talk about our OST performance from this past school year. This graph, the reason it is red and blue are for two reasons. The grade levels that are highlighted red show regressions in student performance between the 21-22 school year and that of the 22-23 school year. Those in green show grades who made improvements. And I want to highlight, we had some very dramatic improvements in grade five, going from 51% proficient to 61%, as well as even some incremental there in grade eight, 36 to 43%. This was the first year, we only had 56% of our third graders show proficiency on the third grade reading guarantee. And most years, we're close to 75, up to 85% proficient. This was a very difficult year for us in terms of performance in third grade. This is our math performance. I kept third grade yellow because their performance was the same. 73% of our scholars between 21 and 22 and 22 and 23 were proficient. And then we had also some large dramatic gains in grade four and grade five. And then you see in red there, sixth and seventh grade had some declining performance, but eighth grade was able to do some rebounding for us. On the state report card, in the area of achievement, we were two stars. Early literacy, this usually is an area that we excel in. Post-COVID, we are still picking up with some of our scholars that spent their early formative years online. So we had two stars in our report card data for early literacy. If you guys look at the graph there, that first one is us being able to get most of our kindergartners that were on RIMPs off of RIMPs by first grade. So that's 70% of our students moving to on-track. But then we take a huge dip from first grade to second grade, and there's all sorts of reasons. The test goes from being read to them, to them not being read to. But then we show some rebounding coming back into second to third grade with getting more students off-track. This is an area of focus for our building heavily this school year. It is a network focus of Ms. Clark's network. We, this was a very, an area that we typically soar in, that we saw a lot of regression this past school year. In terms of gap closing, this is not the first time. We've had quite a few stars or high performance in closing gaps. And so we were four stars in gap closing this past school year. We, in the areas of English Language Arts, we surpassed our goal for the subgroups of economically disadvantaged, Hispanic, Black, and English language learners, surpassing the goal that the state set for us. And in the math side, we surpassed our goal in multiracial, economically disadvantaged, English language learners, Black students, Hispanic students, and students with disabilities, which is amazing. We are super proud of ourselves, and Riverside is an interesting school because we're pretty much every subgroup that the report card have. We have a gifted population as well, and so we kind of fall all over our report card in having to make gains in many different groups and areas, and four stars for our building this past year. Our conditions for learning data is fair. I think it's, the one area that we're learning is we are now translating the conditions for learning survey for our Arabic-speaking students so that they have equitable access to taking the survey accurately. So we're hoping to see some changes with our scores when we get those back, should be soon because the window's closing. If you see, our lowest area is self-regulation inhibitory control. The students are very honest that they themselves or their friends and scholars around them really struggle containing their self-regulation skills. And so something we work on through PBIS and also class meetings, and when we bring students down to the planning center who are kind of struggling throughout the course of the day. And then more pictures of our beautiful scholars. So I'm pretty sure, I'm not the only school that probably could have filled five slides with the numbers of community partners that we work with. We're very fortunate inside of CMSD to be aligned with so many great organizations that want to help and support our school and our community. I decided today to just highlight the ones here. Especially, we have a partnership with a local handmade soap company in Lakewood called STEM. We've been working with them for four years to create beautiful products for our teachers as gifts throughout the course of the school year. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I, how appreciative we are as a school community for what they do for our teachers. And we've worked with Life Act. We are a safe zone trained school with the LGBTQ Center of Greater Cleveland. We partner with Baldwin Wallace and Cleveland State, Planned Parenthood. The Phi Delta Fraternity at Case Western Reserve donates over 100 pumpkins to our building every year for our own pumpkin patch and competition. And then we also are a Cleveland Playhouse Out of School Time School is our partner. So you might, if you ever follow us on Instagram, we frequently use this hashtag. It's a Riverside thing. You just wouldn't understand. We have a shirt that says the same thing, but I really believe that to understand what it means to be a Riverside Owl is to live the life that we live every single day and be inside of our building with our scholars and our educators. We were very fortunate to have an Excellence in Teaching Award winner, Ms. Wendy Pugh, our second winner. And we were a three-star school this year on our state report card with goals to get above that by the end of this school year. We have a total of seven, I have to make sure I'm, seven heart winners, I think? I want to just make sure. We have a total of seven, seven heart winners. Ms. Davis, my secretary, is a heart winner. Almost everybody in my main office has been a heart winner. One of my environmental service specialists is a heart winner. Two of my classroom teachers are heart winners. And the picture in the middle there shows two of our scholars. We were the district Go Red Spirit School of the Year last year. And so that trophy is in our office as well. And any of the kids at Riverside will tell you that Ms. Gamble loves trophies. Yes, I do. I love trophies. I just love to win. And so I do, I'm competitive. The kids will tell you, I will, like- The kids will tell you, I, I will like play horse with a student at recess with the intention of me winning and they know it. But it's just, it's playful and it makes the students excited and me a real person to our scholars. But we do love to win at Riverside and last year was no exception. Our girls volleyball team were the K-8 champions and that is not our first time winning the K-8 volleyball championship arena. We were runner-up in the K-8 cheerleading competition last year. It was our first cheerleading competition ever that our students competed in. They were amazing and beautiful. Our scholars were also dancing classroom finalists last year, our fifth graders. And our girls basketball team was second place in the K-8 arena. I would invite you, if you're ever not busy, to come down and see why we love costumes so much at Riverside. So did someone say costumes? This is just a small, small portion of what you might see if you ever walk into Riverside on any one of our given themed days. These pictures include many of the people from the main office. We have costumes in bins in my basement, in our closet, that cone costumes hanging on my door in my office. I actually wore it last week for an adjective parade with first grade. We love to dress up and Ms., my assistant principal and I take pictures every year for a holiday photo and those are some of our holiday pictures. And lastly, we took a group of students to New York City last school year in eighth grade. We had 24 scholars visit New York City. We saw Hamilton on Broadway. We went to, I just lost the, the observation deck where we're there, Vanguard. Am I saying it right here? I think Vanguard. It's a little different than the Empire State Building. We took 24 eighth graders with us on this trip and it was magical and amazing. And we're going to run it back again this school year and take our current eighth graders to New York because it is an experience like no other, spending four days with a group of eighth graders in New York City. And so with that, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Principal Gamble. Yeah, let's give her a hand. I'll invite our board members to see if they have any questions, but I first wanted to say thank you. You could tell from your presentation that it is a, a strong culture you're building over there and I had the opportunity of visiting and I, I felt it in the time I was there. So you guys are doing great and a great job analyzing your data. It was really clear that you guys had taken a look at the areas that you guys were focusing on. I do have one question. If it's more or less put a pin or something you will want to think about. You mentioned third grade last year, reading took a dip, but then math seemed really high, even above all the other, the grade levels in terms of that analysis for math. Any thought of why that was? And then also what strategies are you doing particularly on the ELA side for this year?
So that's a wonderful question. Do you want me to answer or just think about it?
If you have it, yeah.
Sure. So we're, in third grade, we are always really high in math. Frankly, 73 is quite low. Typically in the 80s is where our proficiency is. We do have really strong K-1 and 2 math teachers. I do believe into math is an extremely rigorous math curriculum. So the students are exposed to problem solving, starting in kindergarten. It is a problem-solving rich program and it is very challenging. And so I do think when our scholars get to OST math, it is something they're very familiar with. We do use the Cube strategy for math across our building. So students are circling and underlining and boxing keywords and phrases and they're learning what those phrases are, starting in kindergarten. So I think that, that's helpful for us. In terms of reading last year, in third grade, it was not, the teachers are phenomenal, phenomenal. I would put them up against anybody, but we were working with a group of students who had lost so much during COVID and lost a lot of foundational skills. They were the, the lowest performing group in my building last year, although statistically on the report card, it didn't look that way. It looked like middle school. A large number of students who had identified students with disabilities and EL students. So some of the strategies that we're continuing to work on, we've kind of doubled down on support for EL students and across all of our grades. We are pushing in. We have a co-teaching model for ELA. So the special ed teachers are in the class with the teachers instead of pulling out five days a week in the resource room. We are focused on writing, again with the writing. And then we're also working on those foundational skills using some sort of daily phonics routine for our students who are still trying to recoup some early literacy and foundational. And just like into math, into literature is extremely rigorous for our scholars. And so we are holding them accountable for reading, reading grade level text every single day and kind of getting in there and digging around on what that looks like in the classroom. You're welcome.
I want to thank you for, for a great presentation. It was interesting to learn about all the diversity that is there at Riverside. And I just want to really commend you for having your own two students there because that really shows a lot about your family and just the, it's just very good. So happy to hear that.
Thank you. So I will share that I'm not the only person who has students inside of my building. My secretary's youngest son is also a fifth grader with my son. Our, my kids and her kids were in this presentation. I try to sneak the kids in as much as possible. My son loves that. My fourth grade teacher, I'm, excuse me, my third grade teacher, her son attends our building. My CCC has two sons in my building and my PCIA's grandson is a student in our building as well. And so thank you for bringing that up. It is such a safe and wonderful place that I can't imagine taking my students and my own children anywhere else. And my secretary has two older sons that graduated from Riverside and one is a freshman at Kent. And so Riverside students do go on to do amazing things in this world and, and I hope one day that my two kiddos do the same.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love your passion and enthusiasm. It's infectious. Good job.
Thank you. I love this, I do, I, I love this job through all the challenges and it is a thankless job, like Dr. Morgan said, but that's not why we get up every day to do this work is to be thanked for it. The students are enough. The looks on their faces are enough every day. It is an amazing building to be in. I hope that at some point, all of you have a chance to stop by and see us and see the kiddos in action and get a piece and a feel for our climate and culture because we've worked really hard to get to where we are. So thank you.
I will say thank you.
I was just going to say thank you. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
To add, just the diversity inclusion that you clearly value so much is so evident in the way that you speak and the language that you use when talking about English learners and all of the other things. So I really want to commend you for that in addition to everything my colleagues have said. So thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
The last thing I'll mention just on my report was that this week, we started the CEO weekly newsletter that is coming out. So all of our staff, I believe our families, as well as students should have access to the CEO weekly newsletter that will be coming out and an opportunity for people to sign up for it. So we'll be getting more information to, for that to come out. And it can, it'll share things that are top of mind for me as a leader, things that I'm doing, whether those are school visits, which as of today, I've been able to get into 31 of our 102 schools. And so you'll, you'll be able to just track our, our progress. And then also it's another way to see, spotlight some of our amazing leaders and the work that they're doing in their buildings. That's all. Chair Ellicott.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. I think that our resolutions may be a little bit out of order compared to what's on the website. So is it 5.01 or 7.01?
I'm sorry, it is 5.01. That is, my apologies, typo on that page. I believe the rest is correct.
Okay, got it. I'll just make that edit. All right. Well, this evening, we have a number of resolutions, I think 11, in the areas of Board of Education, Finance, Operations, Equity and Culture, Academics and Talent that will be presented to the Board for discussion only. The Board will be asked to adopt, to consider the adoption of these resolutions at the October 24th Board Business Meeting. The first resolution is 5.01, Amending Policy on Public Participation. With this resolution, the Board will be amending Board Policy BDDH on public participation. This proposed amended policy provides that individuals interested in addressing the Board at Board Business Meetings sign up to do so either online or by telephone by 12 o'clock noon on the day of the business meeting, rather than sign up at the Board Business Meeting in paper, as has been the recent practice. The current three-minute time limit for each speaker and the current 40-minute time limit for the public participation portion of the Board Meeting will remain in place as in past. We have discussed this proposed change and how the public can sign up to address the Board at our business meetings, and we have heard some public comment on the proposed change as well. Based on those public comments concerned with how people without reliable internet access would be able to sign up to speak online, we have added the phone sign-in option. We've worked through a three-month transition of this process, allowing both paper and online signup for those three months, in addition to the now phone, phone signup option to allow the public to adjust and ask questions as the process changes. Our goals in transitioning to an online signup form are to allow the CEO and district staff more time to look into specific concerns before the Board Meeting and help the Board and CEO understand and address issues that are brought up in public comment more comprehensively. The online signup form mechanism will also help the Board and CEO keep a better pulse on the kinds of issues that are brought up at public comment, as we'll be able to have ongoing access to current and historical data about the kind of comments that we receive and allow us the opportunity to see patterns or recurring challenges, as well as what's working more readily on a consistent basis. I also want to add that as we make this transition and always, we do encourage public comment from the community. If anybody is having a challenge accessing or using the public comment signup form, please feel encouraged to call the Board Office or speak with Mr. Kevin Berthloff at a Board meeting when you're here. If you call the Board Office and nobody answers, you can leave a voicemail and you'll get a call back. The goal here is to be as helpful as we can, as we know that this is a transition for many folks and that's why we've had a little bit of a slow rollout for the process. Are there any questions or discussion from Board members on this resolution? Ms. Link?
Thank you, Chair. I just, I applaud adding the phone number for people that don't have access. And I just want to make sure that on the online form or like how would they get the phone number?
The phone number will be available at the district website and then it can be asked, Mr. Berthloff can share it with anyone who needs it at any time. The only reason we didn't put it in the policy is that phone numbers sometimes change and then we don't want to be having to vote every time we change the phone number.
Yeah, that makes sense. So I guess that, okay, that's great.
We'll be sure to announce it at the upcoming Board Meeting and at future Board Meetings as well. That's a good comment.
Yes, thank you.
Comment? Not a question, but a comment. I just want to emphasize that, you know, both the Board and the community will have learning lessons as we transition, but it's important to know that we will be listening to feedback as we get those learning lessons. And I think the direction that we are moving to is really so that we can support the community in a better, more fulsome way and that we're able to understand trends, track comments that are coming in. And I really hope that you all feel that from us and our ears will be open as we go through kind of this transition phase.
Thank you, Ms. Welch Howell. Anyone else? Dr. Morgan, any comments on this resolution?
Yes, I, I just want to echo the comments that were shared here that we've been definitely listening to the input and the feedback and I know everyone has been taking that into consideration and also that this is a learning process for us. I do want to share that I've been in other districts and other districts utilize, that I've been in, from whether Chicago Public Schools, Indianapolis Public Schools, that utilize a similar form and format to make sure that there is an orderly way of organizing our speakers, also making sure that the, the comments are captured in a way that is, is organized. And even more important, in a way that we can give a response to it. When, as you, all of you know, I was in Indianapolis Public Schools right before coming here and I was the chief academic officer. And we utilize this, this similar form and before Board Meetings, having that and seeing the list of what the comments were, as a chief, it was over academics, I was able to see what were some of the comments that were taking place. I was able to better prepare and think about ways that we needed to change things to act on that. And so I want to let you know that this process is actually to be a better response to our constituents that do have concerns. We want to make sure we're capturing it, but then also that we can get into action for it. I saw this happen in real time yesterday in the town hall where people were bringing up really great questions and things that were top of mind. And we had chiefs that were in the room that were like, let me go over there. I didn't know that that was happening. Or where was, where was the fall, where did something, you know, go wrong? What can we be doing better? And so above all, we want to hear from you. We want to make things better. We want to make this better for our kids, for our staff. And having a way that's captured, you know, makes it better for us to be able to respond to you. So I just want to share that and share that this is, you know, the process that other districts use for a similar reason.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. Very much echo all of the comments that have been made and just thank you for the comment, Mrs. Link as well, about sharing the phone number on a regular basis. Dr. Morgan, would you please present the remaining resolutions to the Board?
Yes, I'll start off with our finance resolution. The first is, the first of the finance resolutions is 6.01, authorizing participation in the Cuyahoga, Cuyahoga County 2024 Real Property Tax Advance Program. This is a routine and annual resolution whereby the Board again authorizes the district's participation in this tax advance program, which enables the district to receive its real property tax receipts earlier than, than the otherwise scheduled settlements, settlement dates. The district would be receiving about 20 million in an advance twice per, per year and would not have to wait until the funds would normally be received. This would benefit the district's cash flow and investment opportunities. The district will receive installments during January and March 2024 for the first half of the calendar year collections and July and August 2024 for the second half of the calendar year collections, instead of the normal settlement dates of March and August 2024 respectively. The next is 6.02, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Cuyahoga, Cuyahoga County Universal Pre-K Program and authorizing the chief executive officer to spend the funds in accordance with the terms and conditions of the grant. With this resolution, which this is, has been done on an annual basis for the past couple of years, the Board will be accepting a grant from the Cuyahoga County Universal Pre-K Program and the grant is in the amount of $48,000 to support three-to-five-year-olds' access to a high-quality pre-K program and authorizing the CEO to spend these grants, funds in accordance with the terms and conditions of the grant. The next finance resolution is authorizing the acceptance of a gift and grants from the Allison and Thomas Clockler, Clocker and Martha Holden, Martha Holden Jennings Foundation Step Forward and the William and Flora Hewlett Foundation and authorizing the CEO to spend the funds in accordance with the terms and conditions of these grants. With this resolution, the Board will be accepting the following gifts and grants and authorizing the CEO to spend the, these gifts in accordance with the terms and conditions of the grant. The first from the Clocker, Allison and Thomas Clocker is a gift of $5,000 to support CMSD scholars at our Newcomers Academy. The next is from the Jennings Foundation, a grant in the amount of $3,000 to support the School Garden Program Project at Franklin D. Roosevelt Pre-K School. The next is from the Jennings Foundation as well, which is a grant in the amount of $15,000 to provide arts integration programming at Wilbur Wright Pre-K School, Pre-K 8 School. From Step Forward, a grant in the amount of $439,488 to support the ensuring preschool, to support and ensuring preschoolers from ages three to five are prepared to enter kindergarten and develop a love of learning. And the final one also from the Hewlett Foundation is a grant in the amount of $100,000 to support CMSD's leadership transition. Board members, are there any questions on these finance resolutions?
Mr. Briggs?
Dr. Morgan, I noticed that there are only 32 pages of compliance. Are you up for it? I mean, it's, it's a lot to do in the report. I suppose you have a team of folks who take care of that for you.
And just to make sure I'm understanding that, the compliance for which of the grants or just for?
Well, in general, there are 32 pages of addressing all the grants.
For the reports it will do. Well, yeah, we, we always have to do these and we're, we're, we're used to the process, but I will actually make that note to make sure that, you know, there's any system we need to put in place to make sure we have that. But thank you for noting that.
Sure.
Any other questions?
The next is an operations resolution, and so this is 7.01 authorizing a purchase order to SC Strategic Solutions for Imaging Software and Document Management Services for Student Records in the amount not to exceed $1.618 million. With this resolution, this is to help us move our old student records that were on paper to a digitized format, and we do have members of our operations team that are here to present just a few pieces of information to the board on this resolution. Karen, are you prepared?
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. Board Chair Elquod, board members, and audience, it's a big group tonight, but believe it or not, this is an exciting project. It's been a, it's just been a, I don't want to call it labor of love, but it has been a really exciting project, because, close your eyes and imagine, our district opened in 1841. And in 1911, roundabout, I was talking with our historian here today, just to kind of fact-check, but in about 1911, we really had to be serious about records, and how we were maintaining records, and what we were going to do. And so this slide just sort of takes you on that project. We're only focused on one area tonight, which is student records, and that's what this piece is about, digitizing our student records. But I do want you to know, this has been a process that we've looked at holistically across the district, and it started with looking at policy and thinking about our policy, and then following the law in terms of record retention, and what we have to do with Ohio law and school districts and public records, and then following it through in terms of making sure that we're following a disposal record process in the proper method. So what that led to for the student records and what you're looking at tonight with the resolution, we had four phases with this project. And that work started in 2021, when we really started with the policy work. And I think you can remember Kevin Berthloff and Jared Fox, who was our fellow from Harvard, would come up and present records. And there's a number of policies that fall under that one. Policies, not just only our student records, but finance policy was updated, as well as public records requests and personnel records. And so through these three phases, or four phases, I'm sorry, the first phase really was going to what I will call our warehouse, which was South High School, and anytime a building closed, that's where the records were shifted to. And so if you know South High School, it's a very large building. It was filled from top to bottom with records. And there's not a person in this room that wasn't tapped to come, look at the records, whether it was for finance or student records, et cetera, and go through it. One of the outputs from that is, we removed over 13,000 boxes of physical student records to be housed at Iron Mountain. That wasn't our permanent solution, but that was phase one. We also, from South, relocated our archive records, which is some pretty cool history. If you ever have a chance, we have that at Woodland. We moved our textbook warehouse, which is now over at Woodland, and we're in the process of really repurposing Woodland to be a true warehouse, with second floor being records that can maintain for a length of time, which is our textbooks, census cards, which we have to have forever. And then the third floor are just some permanent things that will be housed at Woodland. But phase two was taking our 13 boxes, 13,000 boxes, I'm sorry, of student records, and moving those to Iron Mountain. And then the fun began. We knew we wanted to digitize our records. And so that's when we had a partner in, a thought partner in this work, in this collaborative team, which was Columbus. I would say Columbus City Schools is about three to four years ahead of us in this project in digitizing records. And so we had three, if you'll note, there were three vendors that we looked at. Strategic Solutions came back as the best, most responsive bid, and they're servicing, as of today, they're servicing over 600 districts in the state of Ohio in this process. And so part of phase two was getting that done. That's what this resolution is about. And we're ready to move to phase three, which is now thinking about the training. And in the fall, we met with the secretaries, our team from legal, we have a team from the engagement team, which is the enrollment team, as well as the finance team, in helping us with the procurement strategy. But they've come together on a regular basis. We've been going through the phases of this process. And now we're in the space of making sure that we have the indexing, the system will happen, and then schools will be able to retrieve. And I think the hardest part of the project is going to occur where, when we met with the secretaries, and I was smiling because she was at our training in the fall, they cheered, like, they're like, "Yay, you're going to get records. We're going to start working with schools. We have to keep paper records or permanent records for five years after students leave the district, and then we can digitize." So beginning this spring, we'll be working from 2019 back, and we are going to focus primarily on our high schools. But then we get to that annual, annual system. So every year, so then for the '24-'25 school year, our school, our high schools will then release which records? 2020. But, but, again, it's the right work, it's what we should be doing, and I think in front of that, and behind the scenes with that, we're also looking at, there is a process for digitizing records, starting in our primary grades, moving up. But as you can imagine, I would say from 1990, the 90s, that's when we started to go to electronic systems. Everything is paper. And so that's where the bulk of our work is going to be, and we're going to be spending time, but we'll scan it, then we'll be able to retrieve it. But it is going to be work. We want to memorialize it, so whoever's in front of you on an annual basis talking about this should be able to say, "We had this many records shift to or be digitized, and now we can dispose of them properly, the paper records, and we have it electronically, and you can retrieve it." So that's, that's been our journey, that's been the goal, and that's been the work of a pretty diverse team that is working around this. And I was happy that we got a fellow this year from the Cleveland Foundation, Rachel, who, she's our project manager and helping create this training space, because we will be having a training plan, and then it will be an annual review of what we do with records. And while this is for student records, and it is, it is a big ticket item for this initial phase, the maintenance fee for this then, that will happen beginning in 2025, is in the neighborhood of, it can fluctuate depending on how many paper records we have, but it'll be in the neighborhood of about $60,000 annually, which is very reasonable for a district our size. Yes?
Thank you, Karen. That was a good report. I do have several questions. The contract limits the liability to the contract price, which is pretty normal in these situations. It also talks about a $2 million insurance policy, but it doesn't say what that covers. I just want to be sure that we have this covered either through their insurance or our insurance, whether ransomware situation, or some sort of a hacking situation, that we don't expose ourselves to all kinds of lawsuits.
I will take that back. I don't want to answer, but that's a, that's a great question. I will say, Mr. Briggs, we have had our legal team, Jonathan Decker does sit on this committee with us.
Okay. And then the other two things are, is this a platform that's transferable? Let's say we don't agree on a renewal contract, will that platform be easily transferred to another vendor?
I don't want to misspeak, so let me verify, but that was one of the things we had looked at, was the ease, and strategic solution did, especially in terms of when upgrades happen and upgrades occur, they don't add on an extra charge. I do want to reinforce, this is not a space we will be in forever. We will have a set of records that will stay electronically with strategic solution, but at some point, we will be totally digitized in the district, that we won't have to use an outside vendor. So I think we'll be living in two worlds, but let me get clarification on that question.
And the, I'm sorry, the last question is, to be sure that they have ample backup to their computer systems and all that.
Yeah, that was one thing we looked hard at. We asked, I mean, to say, when we started this work, they had 500, they're up to 600, but we went after the, talked to our colleagues of similar size, and they were, you know, just very, very happy. We talked with Cincinnati, I think Akron. Columbus was just a wonderful thought partner, and we ended up doing a lot of work with them, because they were where we want to go.
Good job, thank you.
I had a couple of questions. The first one, what's the risk if we push this back a year or two for the next phase?
We will still have to store the records, and for right now, just to give you an example, Shahira, our person that does transcripts, she received a request, and so she, they're being stored at Iron Mountain. She put the request in, she needed three student records to verify, one wanted a transcript, one wanted something else. They had to bring over 500 boxes that she spent. So when I look at the time, I think it's a high risk, but I understand the question.
Yep, that makes sense. And then maybe this is a branch off of the first one, but do we have a target of sort of ongoing cost savings that we would expect from not having to store paper documents on an ongoing basis? Have we sized that?
We could map it out if we were never to go digitize and just have to do permanent storage with the paper records.
I guess I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm saying the opposite. So once we were to digitize, there are some costs associated with Iron Mountain and storing the paper documents. Once we digitize, what is the general cost savings to not having to do that storage or work with the third parties?
I can get you the exact amount, but it's sizable. Yeah, to just be able to use the digitized system versus the paper, yeah. We can get that, yeah.
Thank you.
Sounds really fun, Ms. Thompson. Thanks for sharing my passion.
I have a follow-up to, to the question that was just asked for the cost. So just to be clear, you know, this, this resolution, you know, has a dollar figure, which is the purchase order to actually purchase this thing, and it is a sizable investment, but the, but there is a, there is a current, ongoing investment that we are making in the physical storage. Plus, when you, when you bring that number, which is, which should be easy to find, I can also give you a slightly more difficult-to-find thing. So if you could also give us, you just mentioned the request for the three transcripts and the 500 boxes, right? If you could also bring us some data on how many such requests come to us on an average year, right? Because that is also a cost, right? I mean, if a, if a staff person has to, you know, receive 500 boxes, go through them to find three transcripts, right, or three, three records, that's, that is a significant amount of time that is being allocated to an FTE employee, not just the cost, but the, again, the human cost of actually doing that work. So it would be good for us to have that as well.
Great, and I'm very thankful we're taping this, so I can go back and listen and really be thoughtful about answering. But that's a great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Karen Thompson's our senior chief of district operations, so I appreciate that, and appreciate the questions. One of the things we're trying to do on amounts that we'll be bringing that are large in amounts, and also projects that are substantial, we want to bring a presentation other than just the written, so the dress can actually see that. The next resolution is 8.01, and this is in our Equity and Culture Division, and this is authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to the Step Up Curriculum, or the Second Step Curriculum, that is an evidence-based social-emotional learning program for grades six, seven, and eight, for each of our K8 schools, in the amount not to exceed $127,846.80. The Step Up, the Second Step Curriculum is an initiative that will facilitate our youth's social and emotional development in grades six, seventh, and eighth. The objective is to guide our scholars through the five castle core competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Emotion management will help students to set progress markers, to assist in determining, assist in determining achievable goals and strategies. Empathy and communication are part of managing relationships and social conflict. These are just a few of the program themes of the Second Step Program that offer stimulating and thought-provoking problem-solving solid skills, continually emphasized throughout the lessons, utilizing practical applications. Any questions on this resolution?
Dr. Morgan, I do have a couple of questions. Is this a program that's been used in other places successfully? I assume that's the case.
Yes, and I believe this is one that we've used before. This is an annual one for it, but I know I personally have used Second Step in Indianapolis Public Schools. It was our, the program that we used in our elementary, the SEO program that we used in our elementary schools.
Great. I'm a big fan of this whole concept, and I think it's great you're incorporating.
So I have a question. Again, you know, it would be good for us to have this at the business meeting. Do we have data on how we have used, this is a renewal code, so clearly we have been using this in the district. It would be good to at least paint a picture on what kinds of things we have been benefiting from, from using this curriculum and this model? So yeah, anything that you can bring.
Yeah, we can get that for you. All right. Our next resolution is an academic resolution, and this is describing the Cleveland Municipal School District's performance for the 22-23 school year. Under the Cleveland Plan legislation enacted by the Ohio Legislature in 2012, our board has previously, in 2012 and 2015, adopted an array of measures to be used in evaluating the performance of the school district and goals for improvement on each of those measures. Each year, our board is required to submit a report to the governor, the superintendent of public instruction, and beginning this year, the director of the new Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, and the general assembly, describing the school district's performance for the previous school year in each of these measures, and whether the school district has met each of these goals for improvement. With this resolution, the board will be adopting and issuing this annual report for the 22-23 school year. The report attached as Exhibit A to this resolution on the board work session agenda is still in draft form and will be finalized before the board is asked to adopt this resolution at the October 24th board business meeting. So you can see the full report in the notes here. It shares our overall district performance, which I know we were able to go over at a very high level at our board retreat, but this also gives the school-by-school average star rating that each of our schools received. Are there any questions on this resolution?
I have a question, Dr. Morgan. So I, on that, on the very last page of this report, there's a chart that talks about percentage of graduation cohort taking ACT or SAT with percentage college-ready. So can you help me? But there's no legend to that. So there are two different numbers in those bars. There's the red part and the blue part. Can you explain that real quick? What is, yes, please.
This is Chris Broaden, who's in our organizational accountability department.
The red bar represents the students that are remediation-free, a metal remediation-free score, and the bottom, the blue bar, are the ones that participated in the SAT.
So, so just to be clear, so 7.9% of the students in 2023 graduated high school from CMSD remediation-free, and, but, and then a different 51.4% took SAT or ACT, or are they included?
No, they're included. This is, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, this might be, yeah, it might be a little bit complicated, because it is a little bit different than what is presented on our state report card. And so what we did here, we had a transition year for where we were mostly, had our students take an ACT, and then it shifted to the SAT, okay? And so what we did here is, yeah, that... And so what we did here is, yeah, it was an averaging of the percentages of students that were in that cohort, the 23 that took either the SAT or the ACT. And then that's the percentage. And then the red bar just represents of that percentage that took it, 7.9% remediation-free.
So, okay, so thank you for that clarification. So if I, just to, just to be clear here, so just under 60% of the students in 2023 took the ACT or the SAT, but only just under 8% of our students would be remediation-free, that they would be able to go into college and not have to take any remedial courses?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I also want to note that this, and we're also showing this is a little bit, actually a little bit higher than what it should be too, because we're counting in here that there are students that graduated. And so if you do include some of the, you know, it gets a little complicated with the cohorts, but there's some that do not graduate. And so, and that we also have some that we didn't have access to that are in our charter schools that aren't included in this. And so it's around, this is an area that we need to really improve on, that we've been hovering around this 5% to 6% to 7% of remediation-free students. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. But it'd be nice to actually include a legend in the, on the chart, so, you know, in the final report.
Yeah, I'll correct that.
Thank you.
I have an additional question for either anyone, anyone in the room, I guess. So when we, we're using college-ready and remediation-free as interchangeable?
For this report, is that how you, well, I'll answer it in terms of how the state is going to look at college-ready and then I am curious to know how you did it for this report. So there is a measure that the state will use in the report card for college-ready, which we're still waiting to get the, what the actual measure is and how that will be measured. Some of these that Chris put in this report here is just some of the metrics we've been utilizing over time. And so, Dr. Broaden, I don't know if you have any, have a response in terms of how we're using that, or are you using that interchangeably?
Yeah, and again, this has been really actually kind of a hard metric to sort of measure because the state has changed the way they've calculated over time. And so, but in, so in order to stay consistent, what we did was we determined what our remediation-free score would be, would be to score, I'm trying, it's a 500 on the, it averages out to a 950. I have to go back and look, but it's a 500 or 470 or whatever. And if those kids, if our students receive that, no matter how many times they took it, we just picked one of the scores, that's what that represents.
And the question was, are we using the term interchangeably in terms of college-ready?
Yeah, yes, I, that's another way that the definition has changed. In this instance, yes. I don't feel like this is a good representation of college-ready. I will note that. This is what was agreed upon. But, but when we're stating in this situation, what we're saying is, is that, specifically with the SAT, these are the numbers. We're showing that there's a particular response rate that has been lowered since the pandemic and we have to get it back. But within that, those students are really kind of struggling with reaching a remediation score in the SAT for college. So I hope I answered your question. I note that, we note that this is, might not be the best measure represented, but this is the best that we have at this point in terms of looking at, answering the question of whether our students, in terms of the Cleveland Plan, are college-ready.
And based on this feedback, we'll come back to the 24th. We, one, this report's in draft form and then also with the questions and with the presentation as well. I don't know if there were any additional questions, but we'll come back with those.
Sounds good. Just a note on that, you know, when I hear college-ready, I think 21 score on the ACT or in whatever the equivalent is on the SAT. So if it's a different measure that we're using based on the state, I'd just be interested to know that.
Yeah, the broader point, one, we're trying to get clarity in terms of how the state is looking at that. And then also, we're looking at core measures in terms of what our goal will be in terms of setting that as well. And so we'll get clarity on these, but I think that some of these are just some of the internal measures.
And I'm sorry, I think I kind of understand, yes, that was based on, like, if we use the SAT, it was a 21, if, I mean, ACT, if it was a 21, that's what we considered if you were college-ready. If we've considered if you were college-ready, we went off the, off of the state recommendation cut score that's on the state of a, I can't remember that right now, but it's the 500 ELA or the four something mess. So that's what we did in terms of determining whether or not they were, we called it remediation-free, but that's, we went with what those cut scores were to determine whether they're college-ready, if that's.
And we'll come back with clarity and a legend on that. So thank you, Dr. Broaden. Any other questions on the academic resolution? Or that was on equity, no, that was on academic resolution. So finally, we have our talent resolutions. So these are our standard resolutions that we do. So the first one is 10.01, authorizing the employment of teaching, non-teaching and school-based administrative staff. This is routine and monthly resolution authorizing a total of 60 new hires this month, the details of which are set forth in Exhibit A and attached to this resolution. Resolution 10.02, authorizing the reclassification of employees. This is a routine monthly resolution authorizing the reclassification of a total of 14 employees this month, the details which are also set forth in the attached. Resolution 10.03, accepting the retirements, resignations, and other separations of employees. This is also a routine monthly resolution, accepting a total of 72 separations of employees this month, the details of which are set forth in Exhibit A of this resolution. And then Resolution 10.04, authorizing the issuance of limited contracts for differential positions and the payment of additional earned compensation to employees. This is a routine monthly resolution authorizing limited contracts for differentials and payment of additional compensation to a total of 225 employees this month, the details which are set forth in Exhibit A attached to this resolution. Any questions on the talent resolution?
10.04, I assume that this is within the bargaining contract. No problem with that.
Yes, I had a similar conversation when we were prepping for this. Many of the differentials, as you'll see here, some are for coaches that may be a teacher that is a coach or a teacher that is on a committee. And all of these things are spelled out within the contract and some of which we'll look at as well, but that's where the number comes from in terms of being substantial.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. For old business, just to go back to the public comment signup form, the website is And the phone number to call in to sign up is 216-838-0030. And anyone calling may also leave a voicemail to receive a call back to sign up. Is there any other old business? For new business, I'd like to remind everyone that Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and early voting begins tomorrow at the Board of Elections and via mail. Cleveland voters will be electing six municipal court judges, the clerk of courts, and a councilman, and a councilperson in Ward 11. Issues on the ballot include state issues on reproductive health, the regulation of cannabis, a city charter amendment on budgeting, and Issue 5 and operating levy for Cuyahoga Community College. The board urges everyone to educate themselves on these issues and cast your ballot on or before November 7th. And next, on behalf of the board, I would like to wish a happy birthday to two of our board members, Dr. Sridhar and Ms. Welch Howell, who are celebrating birthdays this month. Happy birthday. Move into executive session. Following executive session, the board will return to this room to briefly conduct further business.
Good morning, CMSD family. This is Dr. Morgan and I'm here with one of our Cleveland School of the Arts scholars, Dalen, who is a senior here at Cleveland School of the Arts. And, you know, it's 10 o'clock, it's in the morning, and every day at 10, we do a little bit of dancing because it's about attendance. So Dalen's going to show me some of his moves and I will have the opportunity to show Dalen some of my moves with tap shoes and then we'll see, you know, what moves we have together. So with that, I'll kick it to you.
All right, shall we just get straight into it?
Yeah, let's do it.
So first, your right leg is going to come up with both of your arms.
Like this.
You're going to place it down.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to go, one, two.
Okay.
Your left arm is going to come in with your left leg.
Okay.
So you go, yes, so you go. One, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four.
Mm-hmm. All right, try it again. Five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four.
All right, yeah.
Shall we add a little bit more to it?
Yeah, let's do it.
So we go, one, two, three, four. You're going to swing both of your arms back.
Okay.
You're going to do two pointing up, one, two.
All right, yeah.
So you go, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah. Good, 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 okay. Okay, so my move in tap shoes, well, this could be done without tap shoes. So we're going to do what is like a flap. And a flap is just when you make a sound with the toe like that. So you just go, flap, and then just go, ball change. Yep, you got it. So, flap, ball change, flap, ball change. Yeah, you'll do it with the right and then we'll do it with the left. So five, six, seven, eight. Flap, ball change, flap, ball change. And then the last two, the last four counts is just five, six, and then just seven, eight. Yep, that's it. All right.
So altogether, it's five, six, seven, eight. Flap, ball change, flap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe.
Got it, yeah, see, you're tapping now. All right, you want to do them together?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, ooh, try to swing them in a whole, let's see, two eight counts, so.
So again, five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Flap, ball change, flap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe.
All right, yeah, there we go. Shall we freestyle?
Sure. Five, six, seven, eight.
So as we shared before, it is really important to get to school.
So.
Get to school.
You can make it!
I am here at Cleveland School of the Arts, one of our phenomenal CMSD campuses led by an amazing leader in Principal Franklin. And I'm sharing about the importance to get to school and attendance. Currently, right now, CMSD's average attendance rate is 84%. School districts similar to CMSD are at 90% right now. Our chronic absenteeism rate is 42.5%. Students who miss 18 days of school in a year are chronically absent. We track it by 10 days or more are chronically absent. It's really important to get to school. If you're not in school, you cannot learn. So that's why this month and every month, it's important that all of our scholars get to school.
Hello. Hi. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have great news. All right, I hope you get excited. I hope you're ready to clap. I hope you're ready to cheer as we announce to your teacher, congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching winner!
She engages her students in a way that makes learning fun and exciting. When students walk into her classroom, they immediately feel a sense of happiness and belonging.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Reverend Greg is an incredibly innovative teacher. Although Latin is not a subject most students expect to study, he uses a gamified approach to teaching and learning that is entirely student-centered, individualized, and effective.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching winner!
Ms. Washington is one of the best science teachers I have encountered. She consistently instills and grows a love of science in her middle school. Mrs. Washington uses a variety of methods to inspire our scholars. Here's a little bit about what your administration and colleagues had to say about you.
Oh, I'm going to cry.
Ms. Melendez is truthfully the most dedicated and talented teacher I have had the honor to work with. She is deeply committed to the relentless reflection, improvement, and innovation of her craft.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
She has developed individualized, personalized learning maps where students develop agency of their learning. She has an incredible passion and determination for teaching her students, for supporting her colleagues, and for always seeking ways to be better for her diverse students. Mr. Durbin is one of the best teachers I have worked with in my career. He does an excellent job creating an environment that supports all students to grow and learn. He allows students to learn from each other and creates an environment that is safe and positive.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Kerrick is caring, is a caring teacher that wears her heart on her sleeve. She goes well beyond her own needs to ensure that her students are successful and achieve their goals academically and socially.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Every student that works with Ms. Thomas leaves her projects or programs with 1,000 times more confidence. Her commitment to every scholar, whatever it takes, is evident in the countless evenings and Saturdays that she spends working with her students.
You are the Excellence in Teaching winner!
Pugh is a gifted educator who has a unique talent to support a wide ability of learners from EL to gifted to students with disabilities. Ms. Pugh is always coming up with fun and innovative ways to show her students, to show how much they know.
Can you get ready to clap and cheer as we congratulate your teacher and announce you are an Excellence in Teaching winner!
He seeks to understand the whole child, is extremely patient, and always encourages a student to do their best at all times. Mr. Miller's instructional practice demonstrates high levels of learning with differentiated instructional pathways that truly supports the individual scholar to reach their actionable goals.
It's going to be an amazing day!
Today, walking to school, my son means life. It's experience for me, because I never did a father and dad walk, but it's a lot, man. Keep me strong, keep me going.
We are honoring and celebrating this day, which is our annual Father's Walk. Was happy to start my day here and be joined with so many wonderful fathers and father figures of CMSD and particularly fathers and father figures of our scholars here at Max Hayes. And it's just incredible to see so many of our fathers and father figures across our entire district coming alongside of us to do this important work, raising their hand to say we care, raising their hand to say it's important to have an education, and raising their hand to say it's important to be invested in our school districts.
I want hats off to the fathers that are here because it's important that they be in their kids' lives and these are memories that they will cherish forever.
For me to be walking my son is just a blessing, though, you know? Really, like, yeah.
If you don't support them, who will? You know, like, that's, that's all we got, our kids, our family.
The day was very important. It's actually my very first Father's Walk. I just got custody of my daughter this year. So for me, this was like, big time. I mean, I've been waiting for something like this, so.
I want to show them that I care and I love them. Father's Walk is a great idea. It really allows fathers to come and, you know, support their kids and I really like that.
Lo que tenemos que hacer en este momento es, es apretar algunos de los brazos.
During their ten-day trip to Ecuador, Davis Aerospace and Maritime High School 2023 valedictorian Gabriel Leonard and eleventh grader Yara Sal met Samantha for the first time.
It was nice to finally meet her in person for the first time since the only times we've been able to meet her was over Zoom. So finally being able to see her in person, give her a hug, it was like, this is a real person that we're helping and, and we're able to see what we're doing come to life.
She is the Ecuadorian girl who inspired them to design and make a 3D-printed prosthetic arm. With the help of IMA Helps, a medical nonprofit that organizes humanitarian missions to underserved countries, the first arm was delivered last year. During this trip, she is being fitted for her second arm.
Everything that she would say, like, more me understanding what she's saying in Spanish, like, word for word and her feelings, like, I can understand it a hundred percent. And, like, the, the things she were saying, like, you know, we're able to, like, make her dream happen. So it's very touching, um, and it was just amazing meeting her. She's, she's a very nice, um, young lady.
Daniela, also an eleventh grader at Davis, couldn't make the trip, but she is the one that convinced her robotics teammates to initially help Samantha, who lost both of her arms in a bus accident. On this trip, they helped not only Samantha, but six other children. Daniela, who is from Ecuador, says she is touched her classmates helped her compatriots.
Like, it made me cry because I thought then, um, with little kids and the prosthetics, um, like, making hearts and stuff, it was love. It was like, um, especially something that they, that came from their heart.
While in Ecuador, John Dar Bradshaw, the Great Lakes Science Center Community Engagement Coordinator and STEM Education Consultant, says the students also assisted volunteer medical staff with IMA Helps see more than four thousand patients seeking medical and dental care.
Had all of this compassion, uh, they had this empathy, and, um, and they really knew their stuff. They really made a difference. And not only did it change the lives of the patients that we saw, it changed the lives of these students as well.
This trip of a lifetime helping other children has made all three of these students think about ways they can continue to help others.
It was very life-changing, it humbles, like, you very much, um. It just, like, opens your eyes, and even that, like, I wanna be a pilot, but now, like, it's pushing me a little bit further into the medical field.
But also as a pilot, I think, uh, there's a possibility that I could maybe, you know, fly people or doctors down to these countries and be able to, um, give them the transportation that they need to help out these people.
The robotics team, with the help of the Great Lakes Science Center and Argonaut, came home with more than a dozen requests to make prosthetic arms for those in need in Ecuador. Plus, IMA Helps has invited CMSD students to go on another mission next summer.
Man, oh man, we saw so many more people that were in desperate need, and it wasn't like we could tell anybody no. So right now, we have fifteen solid orders.
I want to continue doing this because, like, I want to keep changing people's life in, in the future with them and, uh, going to new countries to, to meet new people.
Good morning, CMSD family! This is Dr. Morgan, and I'm here with one of our Cleveland School of the Arts scholars, Dalen, uh, uh, who is a senior here at Cleveland School of the Arts. And, um, you know, it's ten o'clock, it's in the morning, and every day at ten, we do a little bit of dancing because it's about a ten dance. So, uh, Dalen's gonna show me some of his moves, uh, and I will have the opportunity to show, uh, Dalen some of my moves with tap shoes, and then, uh, we'll see, you know, what moves we have together. So, uh, uh, with that, I'll kick it to you.
All right, um, shall we just get straight into it?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
So first, your right leg is gonna come up with both of your arms.
Like this.
You're gonna place it down.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna go one, two.
Okay.
Your left arm is gonna come in with your left leg.
Okay.
So you go, yes, so you go. One, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four.
Mm-hmm. All right, let's try that again. Five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four. Oh, yeah. Uh, should we add a little bit more to it?
Yeah, let's do it.
So we go, one, two, three, four. You're gonna swing both of your arms back.
Okay.
You're gonna do two pointing up, one, two.
All right.
Yeah.
So you go.
So. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yeah. Good, 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 okay.
Okay, so my move in tap shoes, well, this could be done without tap shoes. So we're gonna do, uh, what is like a falap. And a falap is just when you make a sound with the toe like that. So you just go falap and then just go ball change.
Yep, you got it.
So falap, ball change, falap, ball change. Yeah, you'll do it with the right and then we'll do it with the left. So five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change. And then the last two, uh, the last four counts is just five, six, and then just seven, eight.
Yep, that's it.
All right. So all together it's five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe.
All right.
Yeah, see, you're tapping now. All right, you wanna do them together?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, ooh, try to swing them in a whole, let's see, you know, two eight counts.
So, all right. So again, five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Falap, ball change, falap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe.
All right, yeah. There we go.
Shall we freestyle?
Sure.
Five, six, seven, eight. So as we shared before, it is really important to get to school.
So?
Get to school.
You can make it!
I am here at Cleveland School of the Arts, one of our phenomenal CMSD campuses led by an amazing leader in Principal Franklin. And I'm sharing about the importance to get to school and attendance. Currently, right now, CMSD's average attendance rate is eighty-four percent. School districts similar to CMSD are at ninety percent right now. Our chronic absenteeism rate is forty-two point five percent. Students who miss eighteen days of school in a year are chronically absent. We track it by ten days or more are chronically absent. It's really important to get to school. If you're not in school, you cannot learn. So that's why this month and every month, it's important that all of our scholars get to school.
Hello. Hi. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have great news. All right, I hope you get excited. I hope you're ready to clap. I hope you're ready to cheer as we announce to your teacher, congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching winner!
She engages her students in a way that makes learning fun and exciting. When students walk into her classroom, they immediately feel a sense of happiness and belonging. I can do it.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner.
Reverend Greg is an incredibly innovative teacher. Although Latin is not a subject most students expect to study, he uses a gamified approach to teaching and learning that is entirely student-centered, individualized, and effective.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Washington is one of the best science teachers I had encountered. She consistently instills and grows a love of science in her middle school. Mrs. Washington uses a variety of methods to inspire our scholars. Here's a little bit about what your administration and colleagues had to say about you.
Oh my God, I'm gonna cry.
Ms. Melendez is truthfully the most dedicated and talented teacher I have had the honor to work with. She is deeply committed to the relentless reflection, improvement, and innovation of her craft.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
She has developed individualized, personalized learning maps where students develop agency of their learning. She has an incredible passion and determination for teaching her students, for supporting her colleagues, and for always seeking ways to be better for her diverse students. Mr. Durbin is one of the best teachers I have worked with in my career. He does an excellent job creating an environment that supports all students to grow and learn. He allows students to learn from each other and creates an environment that is safe and positive.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Kerrick is caring, is a caring teacher that wears her heart on her sleeve. She goes well beyond her own needs to ensure that her students are successful and achieve their goals academically and socially.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Every student that works with Ms. Thomas leaves her projects of, uh, or programs with a thousand times more confidence. Her commitment to every scholar, whatever it takes, is evident in the countless evenings and Saturdays that she spends working with her students.
You won the Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Pew is a gifted educator who has a unique talent to support a wide ability of learners from EL to gifted to students with disabilities. Ms. Pew is always coming up with fun and innovative ways to show her students to show how much they know.
Can you get ready to clap and cheer as we congratulate your teacher and announce you are an Excellence in Teaching winner!
He seeks to understand the whole child, is extremely patient, and always encourages a student to do their best at all times. Mr. Miller's instructional practice demonstrates high levels of learning with differentiated instructional pathways that truly supports the individual scholar to reach their actionable goals.
It's gonna be an amazing day!
Hey, welcome to school, my son means life. It's experience for me, 'cause I never did a father and dad walk, but it's a lot, man. Keep me strong, keep me going.
We are honoring and celebrating, uh, this day, which is our annual Father's Walk. Was happy to start my day here and be joined with so many wonderful, um, fathers and father figures of CMSD and particularly, uh, fathers and father figures of our scholars here at Max Hays. And it's, it's just incredible to see so many of our fathers and father figures across our entire district coming alongside of us to do this important work, raising their hand to say we care, uh, raising their hand to say it's important to have an education, and raising their hand to say it's important to be invested in our school districts.
I want hats off to the fathers that are here because it's important that they be in their kids' lives and these are memories that they will cherish forever.
For me to be walking my son is just a blessing, dog, you know? Really, like, yeah.
If you don't support them, who will? You know, like, that's, that's what we got, our kids, our family.
The day was very important, it's actually my very first Father's Walk. I just got custody of my daughter this year. So for me, this was like big time, I mean, I've been waiting for something like this, so.
I wanna show them that I care and I love them. Father's Walk is a great idea, really, uh, allows fathers to come and, you know, support their kids, and, and I really like that.
During their ten-day trip to Ecuador, Davis Aerospace and Maritime High School 2023 valedictorian Gabriel Leonard and eleventh grader Yara Sal met Samantha for the first time.
It was nice to finally meet her in person for the first time since the only times we've been able to meet her was over Zoom. So finally being able to see her in person, give her a hug, it was like, this is a real person that we're helping and, and we're able to see what we're doing come to life.
She is the Ecuadorian girl who inspired them to design and make a 3D-printed prosthetic arm. With the help of IMA Helps, a medical nonprofit that organizes humanitarian missions to underserved countries, the first arm was delivered last year. During this trip, she is being fitted for her second arm.
Everything that she would say, like, more me understanding what she's saying in Spanish, like, word for word and her feelings, like, I can understand it a hundred percent. And, like, the, the things she were saying, like, you know, we're able to, like, make her dream happen. So it's very touching, um, and it was just amazing meeting her. She's, she's a very nice, um, young lady.
Daniela, also an eleventh grader at Davis, couldn't make the trip, but she is the one that convinced her robotics teammates to initially help Samantha, who lost both of her arms in a bus accident. On this trip, they helped not only Samantha, but six other children. Daniela, who is from Ecuador, says she is touched her classmates helped her compatriots.
Like, it made me cry because I thought then, um, with little kids and the prosthetics, um, like, making hearts and stuff, it was love. It was like, um, especially something that they, that came from their heart.
While in Ecuador, John Dar Bradshaw, the Great Lakes Science Center Community Engagement Coordinator and STEM Education Consultant, says the students also assisted volunteer medical staff with IMA Helps see more than four thousand patients seeking medical and dental care.
Had all of this compassion, uh, they had this empathy, and, um, and they really knew their stuff. They really made a difference. And not only did it change the lives of the patients that we saw, it changed the lives of these students as well.
This trip of a lifetime helping other children has made all three of these students think about ways they can continue to help others.
It was very life-changing, it humbles, like, you very much, um. It just, like, opens your eyes, and even that, like, I wanna be a pilot, but now, like, it's pushing me a little bit further into the medical field.
But also as a pilot, I think, uh, there's a possibility that I could maybe, you know, fly people or doctors down to these countries and be able to, um, give them the transportation that they need to help out these people.
The robotics team, with the help of the Great Lakes Science Center and Argonaut, came home with more than a dozen requests to make prosthetic arms for those in need in Ecuador. Plus, IMA Helps has invited CMSD students to go on another mission next summer.
Man, oh man, we saw so many more people that were in desperate need, and it wasn't like we could tell anybody no. So right now, we have fifteen solid orders.
I want to continue doing this because, like, I want to keep changing people's life in, in the future with them and, uh, going to new countries to, to meet new people.
Good morning, CMSD family! This is Dr. Morgan, and I'm here with one of our Cleveland School of the Arts scholars, Dalen, uh, uh, who is a senior here at Cleveland School of the Arts. And, um, you know, it's ten o'clock, it's in the morning, and every day at ten, we do a little bit of dancing because it's about a ten dance. So, uh, Dalen's gonna show me some of his moves, uh, and I will have the opportunity to show, uh, Dalen some of my moves with tap shoes, and then, uh, we'll see, you know, what moves we have together. So, uh, uh, with that, I'll kick it to you.
All right, um, shall we just get straight into it?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
So first, your right leg is gonna come up with both of your arms.
Like this.
You're gonna place it down.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna go one, two.
Okay.
Your left arm is gonna come in with your left leg.
Okay.
So you go, yes, so you go. One, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four.
Mm-hmm. All right, let's try that again. Five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four. Oh, yeah. Uh, should we add a little bit more to it?
Yeah, let's do it.
So we go, one, two, three, four. You're gonna swing both of your arms back. You're gonna do two pointing up, one, two.
All right, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah. Okay, so my move in tap shoes, but this could be done without tap shoes. So we're gonna do what is like a falap. And a falap is just when you make a sound with the toe like that. So you just go falap, and then just go ball change. Yep, you got it. So falap, ball change, falap, ball change. Yeah, you'll do it with the right, and then we'll do it with the left. So five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change. And then the last two, the last four counts is just five, six, and then just seven, eight. Yep, that's it. All right. So altogether, it's five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe. Got it, yeah. See, you're tapping now. All right. You want to do them together?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, ooh, try to swing them in a whole, let's see, you know, two eight counts.
So again, five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe.
All right, yeah. There we go. Shall we freestyle?
Sure.
Five, six, seven, eight. So as we shared before, it is really important to get to school.
So?
Get to school!
You can make it!
I am here at Cleveland School of the Arts, one of our phenomenal CMSD campuses led by an amazing leader in Principal Franklin, and I'm sharing about the importance to get to school and attendance. Currently, right now, CMSD's average attendance rate is 84%. School districts similar to CMSD are at 90% right now. Our chronic absenteeism rate is 42.5%. Students who miss 18 days of school in a year are chronically absent. We track it by 10 days or more are chronically absent. It's really important to get to school. If you're not in school, you cannot learn. So that's why this month and every month, it's important that all of our scholars get to school.
Hello. Hi. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have great news. All right, I hope you get excited. I hope you're ready to clap. I hope you're ready to cheer as we announce to your teacher, congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching winner!
She engages her students in a way that makes learning fun and exciting. When students walk into her classroom, they immediately feel a sense of happiness and belonging. I can do it.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Reverend Greg is an incredibly innovative teacher. Although Latin is not a subject most students expect to study, he uses a gamified approach to teaching and learning that is entirely student-centered, individualized, and effective.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Washington is one of the best science teachers I have encountered. She consistently instills and grows a love of science in her middle school. Mrs. Washington uses a variety of methods to inspire our scholars. Here's a little bit about what your administration and colleagues had to say about you. Ms. Melendez is truthfully the most dedicated and talented teacher I have had the honor to work with. She is deeply committed to the relentless reflection, improvement, and innovation of her craft.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
She has developed individualized, personalized learning maps where students develop agency of their learning. She has an incredible passion and determination for teaching her students, for supporting her colleagues, and for always seeking ways to be better for her diverse students. Mr. Durbin is one of the best teachers I have worked with in my career. He does an excellent job creating an environment that supports all students to grow and learn. He allows students to learn from each other and creates an environment that is safe and positive.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Kerrick is caring, is a caring teacher that wears her heart on her sleeve. She goes well beyond her own needs to ensure that her students are successful and achieve their goals academically and socially.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Every student that works with Ms. Thomas leaves her projects or programs with a thousand times more confidence. Her commitment to every scholar, whatever it takes, is evident in the countless evenings and Saturdays that she spends working with her students.
You won the Excellence in Teaching winner!
Pew is a gifted educator who has a unique talent to support a wide ability of learners from EL to gifted with disabilities. Ms. Pew is always coming up with fun and innovative ways to show her students to show how much they know.
Can you get ready to clap and cheer as we congratulate your teacher and announce you will win the Excellence in Teaching Award?
He seeks to understand the whole child, is extremely patient, and always encourages the student to do their best at all times. Mr. Miller's instructional practice demonstrates high levels of learning with differentiated instructional pathways that truly supports the individual scholar to reach their action of goals.
It's gonna be an amazing day!
Hey, welcome to school, my son means life. It's experience for me, because I never did a father and dad walk, but it's a lot, man. Keep me strong, keep me going.
We are honoring and celebrating this day, which is our annual Father's Walk. Was happy to start my day here and be joined with so many wonderful fathers and father figures of CMSD and particularly fathers and father figures of our scholars here at Max Hays. And it's just incredible to see so many of our fathers and father figures across our entire district coming alongside of us to do this important work, raising their hand to say we care, raising their hand to say it's important to have an education, and raising their hand to say it's important to be invested in our school districts.
I want hats off to the fathers that are here because it's important that they be in their kids' lives and these are memories that they'll cherish forever.
For me to be walking my son is just a blessing, dog, you know?
If you don't support them, who will? You know, like, that's what we got, our kids, our family.
The day was very important. It's actually my very first Father's Walk. I just got custody of my daughter this year, so for me, this was like big time. I've been waiting for something like this, so...
I want to show them that I care and I love them. Father's Walk is a great idea. It really allows fathers to come and, you know, support their kids, and I really like that.
During their 10-day trip to Ecuador, Davis Aerospace and Maritime High School 2023 valedictorian Gabriel Leonard and 11th grader Yaracel met Samantha for the first time.
It was nice to finally meet her in person for the first time since the only time we've been able to meet her was over Zoom. So finally, being able to see her in person, give her a hug, it was like this is a real person that we're helping and we're able to see what we're doing come to life.
She is the Ecuadorian girl who inspired them to design and make a 3D-printed prosthetic arm. With the help of IMA Helps, a medical nonprofit that organizes humanitarian missions to underserved countries, the first arm was delivered last year. During this trip, she is being fitted for her second arm.
Everything that she would say, like more me understanding what she's saying in Spanish, like word for word and her feelings, like I can understand it 100%. And like the things she were saying, like, you know, we're able to like make her dream happen, so it's very touching. And it was just amazing meeting her. She's a very nice young lady.
Daniela, also an 11th grader at Davis, couldn't make the trip, but she is the one that convinced her robotics teammates to initially help Samantha, who lost both of her arms in a bus accident. On this trip, they helped not only Samantha, but six other children. Daniela, who is from Ecuador, says she is touched her classmates helped her compatriots.
Like, it made me cry because I saw them with little kids and the prosthetics, like making hearts and stuff. It was love. It was like special. Something that that came from their heart.
While in Ecuador, John Dar Bradshaw, the Great Lakes Science Center Community Engagement Coordinator and STEM Education Consultant, says the students also assisted volunteer medical staff with IMA Helps see more than 4,000 patients seeking medical and dental care.
Had all of this compassion, they had this empathy, and they really knew their stuff. They really made a difference. And not only did it change the lives of the patients that we saw, it changed the lives of these students as well.
This trip of a lifetime, helping other children, has made all three of these students think about ways they can continue to help others.
It was very life-changing. It humbles like you very much. It just like opens your eyes, and even that, like I want to be a pilot, but now like it's pushing me a little bit further into the medical field.
But also as a pilot, I think there's a possibility that I could maybe, you know, fly people or doctors down to these countries and be able to give them the transportation that they need to help out these people.
The robotics team, with the help of the Great Lakes Science Center and Argonaut, came home with more than a dozen requests to make prosthetic arms for those in need in Ecuador. Plus, IMA Helps has invited CMSD students to go on another mission next summer.
Man, oh man, we saw so many more people that were in desperate need, and it wasn't like we could tell anybody no. So right now, we have 15 solid orders.
I want to continue doing this because like I want to keep changing people's lives in the future with them and going to new countries to meet new people.
Good morning, CMSD family. This is Dr. Morgan, and I'm here with one of our Cleveland School of the Arts scholars, Dalen, who is a senior here at Cleveland School of the Arts. And you know, it's 10 o'clock. It's in the morning, and every day at 10, we do a little bit of dancing because it's about a ten dance. So Dalen's gonna show me some of his moves, and I will have the opportunity to show Dalen some of my moves with tap shoes, and then we'll see, you know, what moves we have together. So with that, I'll kick it to you.
All right, shall we just get straight into it?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
So first, your right leg is gonna come up with both of your arms.
Like this.
You're gonna place it down. You're gonna go, one, two.
Okay.
Your left arm is gonna come in with your left leg. So you go, yes. So you go, one, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four.
All right, let's try that again. Five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four. Should we add a little bit more to it?
Yeah, let's do it.
So we go, one, two, three, four. You're gonna swing both of your arms back. You're gonna do two pointing up, one, two.
All right, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah. Okay, so my move in tap shoes, but this could be done without tap shoes. So we're gonna do what is like a falap. And a falap is just when you make a sound with the toe like that. So you just go falap, and then just go ball change. Yep, you got it. So falap, ball change, falap, ball change. Yeah, you'll do it with the right, and then we'll do it with the left. So five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change. And then the last two, the last four counts is just five, six, and then just seven, eight. Yep, that's it. All right. So altogether, it's five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe. Got it, yeah. See, you're tapping now. All right. You want to do them together?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, ooh, try to swing them in a whole, let's see, you know, two eight counts.
So again, five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe.
All right, yeah. There we go. Shall we freestyle?
Sure.
Five, six, seven, eight. So as we shared before, it is really important to get to school.
So?
Get to school!
You can make it!
I am here at Cleveland School of the Arts, one of our phenomenal CMSD campuses led by an amazing leader in Principal Franklin, and I'm sharing about the importance to get to school and attendance. Currently, right now, CMSD's average attendance rate is 84%. School districts similar to CMSD are at 90% right now. Our chronic absenteeism rate is 42.5%. Students who miss 18 days of school in a year are chronically absent. We track it by 10 days or more are chronically absent. It's really important to get to school. If you're not in school, you cannot learn. So that's why this month and every month, it's important that all of our scholars get to school.
Hello. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have great news. All right, I hope you get excited. I hope you're ready to clap. I hope you're ready to cheer as we announce to your teacher, congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching winner!
She engages her students in a way that makes learning fun and exciting. When students walk into her classroom, they immediately feel a sense of happiness and belonging. I can do it.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Reverend Greg is an incredibly innovative teacher. Although Latin is not a subject most students expect to study, he uses a gamified approach to teaching and learning that is entirely student-centered, individualized, and effective.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Washington is one of the best science teachers I have encountered. She consistently instills and grows a love of science in her middle school. Mrs. Washington uses a variety of methods to inspire our scholars. Here's a little bit about what your administration and colleagues had to say about you. Ms. Melendez is truthfully the most dedicated and talented teacher I have had the honor to work with. She is deeply committed to the relentless reflection, improvement, and innovation of her craft.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
She has developed individualized, personalized learning maps where students develop agency of their learning. She has an incredible passion and determination for teaching her students, for supporting her colleagues, and for always seeking ways to be better for her diverse students. Mr. Durbin is one of the best teachers I have worked with in my career. He does an excellent job creating an environment that supports all students to grow and learn. He allows students to learn from each other and creates an environment that is safe and positive.
He allows students to learn from each other and creates an environment that is safe and positive.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Kirk is caring, is a caring teacher that wears her heart on her sleeve. She goes well beyond her own needs to ensure that her students are successful and achieve their goals academically and socially.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Every student that works with Ms. Thomas leaves her projects or programs with a thousand times more confidence. Her commitment to every scholar, whatever it takes, is evident in the countless evenings and Saturdays that she spends working with her students.
You are the Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Pew is a gifted educator who has a unique talent to support a wide ability of learners from EL to gifted students with disabilities. Ms. Pew is always coming up with fun and innovative ways to show her students to show how much they know.
Can you get ready to clap and cheer as we congratulate your teacher and announce you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
He seeks to understand the whole child is extremely patient and always encourages a student to do their best at all times. Mr. Miller's instructional practice demonstrates high level of learning with differentiated instructional pathways that truly supports the individual scholar to reach their actual goals.
You guys got to be an amazing day!
Day you walk into school, my son means life. It's experience for me because I never did a father and dad walk, but it's a lot, man. Keep me strong, keep me going.
We are honoring and celebrating this day, which is our annual Father's Walk. Was happy to start my day here and be joined with so many wonderful fathers and father figures of CMSD and particularly fathers and father figures of our scholars here at Max Hays. And it's just incredible to see so many of our fathers and father figures across our entire district coming alongside of us to do this important work, raising their hand to say we care, raising their hand to say it's important to have an education, and raising their hand to say it's important to be invested in our school districts.
I want hats off to the fathers that are here because it's important that they be in their kids' lives and these are memories that they will cherish forever.
For me to be walking my son is just a classic dog, you know, really.
If you don't support him, who will? You know, like, that's, that's what we got, our kids, our family.
Today was very important. It's actually my very first Father's Walk. I just got custody of my daughter this year. So for me, this was like big time. I mean, I've been waiting for something like this, so.
And I want to show them that I care and I love them. Father's Walk is a great idea. It really, uh, allows fathers to come and, you know, support their kids and I really like that.
During their 10-day trip to Ecuador, Davis Aerospace and Maritime High School 2023 valedictorian Gabriel Leonard and 11th grader Yaracel met Samantha for the first time.
It was nice to finally meet her in person for the first time since the only time we've been able to meet her was over Zoom. So finally being able to see her in person, give her a hug. It was like, this is a real person that we're helping and, and we're able to see what we're doing come to life.
She is the Ecuadorian girl who inspired them to design and make a 3D-printed prosthetic arm. With the help of IMA Helps, a medical nonprofit that organizes humanitarian missions to underserved countries, the first arm was delivered last year. During this trip, she is being fitted for her second arm.
Everything that she would say, like more me understanding what she's saying in Spanish, like word for word and her feelings, like I can understand it 100%. And like the, the things she were saying, like, you know, we're able to like make her dream happen. So it's very touching. Um, and it was just amazing meeting her. She's, she's a very nice, um, young lady.
Daniela, also an 11th grader at Davis, couldn't make the trip, but she is the one that convinced her robotics teammates to initially help Samantha, who lost both of her arms in a bus accident. On this trip, they helped not only Samantha, but six other children. Daniela, who is from Ecuador, says she has touched her classmates helped her compatriots.
Like it made me cry because I saw them with little kids and the prosthetics, um, like making hearts and stuff. It was love. It was like, um, special, something that they, that came from their heart.
While in Ecuador, John Dar Bradshaw, the Great Lakes Science Center Community Engagement Coordinator and STEM Education Consultant, says the students also assisted volunteer medical staff with IMA Helps see more than 4,000 patients seeking medical and dental care.
Had all of this compassion. They had this empathy and, um, and they really knew their stuff. They really made a difference. And not only did it change the lives of the patients that we saw, it changed the lives of these students as well.
This trip of a lifetime, helping other children, has made all three of these students think about ways they can continue to help others.
It was very life-changing. It humbles like you very much. Um, it just like opens your eyes. And even that, like, I want to be a pilot, but now like it's pushing me a little bit further into the medical field.
But also as a pilot, I think there's a possibility that I could maybe, you know, fly people or doctors down to these countries and be able to give them the transportation that they need to help out these people.
The robotics team, with the help of the Great Lakes Science Center and Argonaut, came home with more than a dozen requests to make prosthetic arms for those in need in Ecuador. Plus, IMA Helps has invited CMSD students to go on another mission next summer.
Man, oh man, we saw so many more people that were in desperate need. And it wasn't like we could tell anybody no. So right now we have 15 solid orders.
I want to continue doing this because like I want to keep changing people's lives in the future with them and going to new countries to meet new people.
Good morning, CMSD family. This is Dr. Morgan and I'm here with one of our Cleveland School of the Arts scholars, Dalen, uh, uh, who is a senior here at Cleveland School of the Arts. And, um, you know, it's 10 o'clock. It's in the morning and every day at 10, we do a little bit of dancing because it's about attendance. So Dalen's going to show me some of his moves. Uh, and I will have the opportunity to show Dalen some of my moves with tap shoes. And then we'll see, you know, what moves we have together. So, uh, with that, I'll kick it to you.
All right, um, should we just get straight into it?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
So first, your right leg is going to come up with both of your arms.
Like this.
You're going to place it down.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to go one, two.
Okay.
Your left arm is going to come in with your left leg.
Okay.
So you go, yes, so you go. One, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four.
Mm-hmm. All right, let's try it again. Five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four. All right, yeah. Uh, should we add a little bit more to it?
Yeah, let's do it.
So we go, one, two, three, four. You're going to swing both of your arms back.
Okay.
You're going to do two pointing up, one, two.
All right, yeah.
So there you go.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yeah. Good, 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 okay.
Okay, so my move in tap shoes, well, this could be done without tap shoes. So we're going to do, uh, what is like a falap. And a falap is just when you make a sound with the toe like that. So you just go falap and then just go ball change.
Yep, you got it.
So falap, ball change, falap, ball change. Yeah, you'll do it with the right and then we'll do it with the left. So five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change. And then the last two, uh, the last four counts is just five, six, and then just seven, eight.
Yep, that's it.
All right. So all together it's five, six, seven, eight. Falap, ball change, falap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe. Got it, yeah, see you're tapping now. All right, you want to do them together?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, ooh, try to swing them in a whole, let's see, you know, two eight counts, so.
All right. So again, five, six, seven, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Falap, ball change, falap, ball change, heel, heel, toe, toe.
All right, yeah. There we go.
Shall we freestyle?
Sure.
Five, six, seven, eight. So as we shared before, it is really important to get to school.
So.
Get to school.
You can make it!
I am here at Cleveland School of the Arts, one of our phenomenal CMSD campuses, led by an amazing leader in Principal Franklin. And I'm sharing about the importance to get to school and attendance. Currently, right now, CMSD's average attendance rate is 84%. School districts similar to CMSD are at 90% right now. Our chronic absenteeism rate is 42.5%. Students who miss 18 days of school in a year are chronically absent. We track it by 10 days or more are chronically absent. It's really important to get to school. If you're not in school, you cannot learn. So that's why this month and every month, it's important that all of our scholars get to school.
Hello. Hi. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have great news. All right, I hope you get excited. I hope you're ready to clap. I hope you're ready to cheer as we announce to your teacher, congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching winner!
She engages her students in a way that makes learning fun and exciting. When students walk into her classroom, they immediately feel a sense of happiness and belonging. I can do it.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Reverend Greg is an incredibly innovative teacher. Although Latin is not a subject most students expect to study, he uses a gamified approach to teaching and learning that is entirely student-centered, individualized, and effective.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Washington is one of the best science teachers I have encountered. She consistently instills and grows a love of science in her middle school. Mrs. Washington uses a variety of methods to inspire our scholars. Here's a little bit about what your administration and colleagues have to say about you.
Oh my God, I'm going to cry.
Ms. Melendez is truthfully the most dedicated and talented teacher I have had the honor to work with. She is deeply committed to the relentless reflection, improvement, and innovation of her craft.
Congratulations, you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
She has developed individualized, personalized learning maps where students develop agency of their learning. She has an incredible passion and determination for teaching her students, for supporting her colleagues, and for always seeking ways to be better for her diverse students. Mr. Durbin is one of the best teachers I have worked with in my career. He does an excellent job creating an environment that supports all students to grow and learn. He allows students to learn from each other and creates an environment that is safe and positive.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Ms. Kirk is caring, is a caring teacher that wears her heart on her sleeve. She goes well beyond her own needs to ensure that her students are successful and achieve their goals academically and socially.
You are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Every student that works with Ms. Thomas leaves her projects or programs with a thousand times more confidence. Her commitment to every scholar, whatever it takes, is evident in the countless evenings and Saturdays that she spends working with her students.
You are the Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
Pew is a gifted educator who has a unique talent to support a wide ability of learners from EL to gifted students with disabilities. Ms. Pew is always coming up with fun and innovative ways to show her students to show how much they know.
Can you get ready to clap and cheer as we congratulate your teacher and announce you are an Excellence in Teaching Award winner!
He seeks to understand the whole child is extremely patient and always encourages a student to do their best at all times. Mr. Miller's instructional practice demonstrates high level of learning with differentiated instructional pathways that truly supports the individual scholar to reach their actual goals.
You guys got to be an amazing day!
Day you walk into school, my son means life. It's experience for me because I never did a father and dad walk, but it's a lot, man. Keep me strong, keep me going.
We are honoring and celebrating this day, which is our annual Father's Walk. Was happy to start my day here and be joined with so many wonderful fathers and father figures of CMSD and particularly fathers and father figures of our scholars here at Max Hays. And it's just incredible to see so many of our fathers and father figures across our entire district coming alongside of us to do this important work, raising their hand to say we care, raising their hand to say it's important to have an education, and raising their hand to say it's important to be invested in our school districts.
I want hats off to the fathers that are here because it's important that they be in their kids' lives and these are memories that they will cherish forever.
For me to be walking my son is just a classic dog, you know, really.
If you don't support him, who will? You know, like, that's, that's what we got, our kids, our family.
Today was very important. It's actually my very first Father's Walk. I just got custody of my daughter this year. So for me, this was like big time. I mean, I've been waiting for something like this, so.
And I want to show them that I care and I love them. Father's Walk is a great idea. It really, uh, allows fathers to come and, you know, support their kids and I really like that.
During their 10-day trip to Ecuador, Davis Aerospace and Maritime High School 2023 valedictorian Gabriel Leonard and 11th grader Yaracel met Samantha for the first time.
It was nice to finally meet her in person for the first time since the only time we've been able to meet her was over Zoom. So finally being able to see her in person, give her a hug. It was like, this is a real person that we're helping and, and we're able to see what we're doing come to life.
She is the Ecuadorian girl who inspired them to design and make a 3D-printed prosthetic arm. With the help of IMA Helps, a medical nonprofit that organizes humanitarian missions to underserved countries, the first arm was delivered last year. During this trip, she is being fitted for her second arm.
Everything that she would say, like more me understanding what she's saying in Spanish, like word for word and her feelings, like I can understand it 100%. And like the, the things she were saying, like, you know, we're able to like make her dream happen. So it's very touching. Um, and it was just amazing meeting her. She's, she's a very nice, um, young lady.
Daniela, also an 11th grader at Davis, couldn't make the trip, but she is the one that convinced her robotics teammates to initially help Samantha, who lost both of her arms in a bus accident. On this trip, they helped not only Samantha, but six other children. Daniela, who is from Ecuador, says she has touched her classmates, helped her compatriots.
Like, it made me cry because I saw them with little kids and the prosthetics, like making hearts and stuff. It was love. It was like special, something that that came from their heart.
While in Ecuador, John Dar Bradshaw, the Great Lakes Science Center Community Engagement Coordinator and STEM Education Consultant, says the students also assisted volunteer medical staff with IMA Helps see more than 4,000 patients seeking medical and dental care.
Had all of this compassion, they had this empathy, and they really knew their stuff. They really made a difference. And not only did it change the lives of the patients that we saw, it changed the lives of these students as well.
This trip of a lifetime, helping other children, has made all three of these students think about ways they can continue to help others.
It was very life-changing. It humbles like you very much. It just like opens your eyes. And even that, like I want to be a pilot, but now like it's pushing me a little bit further into the medical field.
But also as a pilot, I think there's a possibility that I could maybe, you know, fly people or doctors down to these countries and.
The board is now back in public session. The chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the suspension of a school-based administrator.
So?
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. Any explanation on this resolution?
Yes, this resolution is to approve a recommendation for the 10-day suspension of a school-based administrator for the violation of district policies, procedures, and rules.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Stockdale, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mrs. Link?
Yes.
Dr. Schridar?
I abstain.
Ms. Welch-Hall?
I abstain.
Motion passes with four votes.
Thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution adopting a process and procedures for the Board of Education and the Chief Executive Officer to communicate and work together.
So move. Second.
Thank you. With this resolution, the board will be adopting a process and procedure for the board and CEO to communicate and work together pursuant to the CEO's employment contract with the board. I won't go through the entire resolution, but the communication norms that we have discussed and that will be approved by this resolution are things such as the cadence of regular check-ins with board leadership and the mayor's office, communicating updates to the board, sending a biweekly update to the, I think there's a typo in the resolution. Mr. Britzloff, may I see the clean copy of the resolution?
The resolution?
That's the red line copy. Which one is the public copy? The one in my script is slightly different from the one that the board reviewed, and it's. This is supposed to be cross-staffed. Yeah.
Is there a clean copy?
Or if someone has the copy. Thank you. Yes, the typo is only in my script and not in the actual resolution. But the resolution generally asks the board to approve what we've already discussed with regard to procedures and processes for communication with the CEO. Any discussion from board members? Dr. Morgan, anything to add? Hearing no further discussion, would you please call the roll, Mr. Stockdale?
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mrs. Link?
Yes.
Dr. Schridar?
Yes.
Ms. Welch-Hall?
Yes.
Motion passes with six votes.
Thank you. As announced, any other further new business? Thank you. As announced earlier, the next regular board meeting will be a board business meeting on Tuesday, October 24 at 6:30 PM at John F. Kennedy High School. The chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn this board work session.
So move.
Second.
Hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.